I think Commissioner Flynn has it. She called off the items that I would like to see. The only addition that I would make to that is that I think that the ASCC would benefit the assistance of a, somebody from the least voice firm. And or, you know, it's one of these things, basically, I think, is you guys, and there's also another firm in Berkeley, you know, who does really good form-based code and who is talented in this area. I think that there's expertise out there and you should avail yourself of it if the town has the resources to assist because it's totally, I think it's totally doable, but I think that you, it will be helpful to have folks who have done this before alongside you, is my, is my only suggestion. Not that many of us.
I will say it would have been great if we'd done this a long time ago.
I'm not even going to say that. I guess the other thing they're going to say is I think that it might be helpful if there were one or two people from the PC, from the Planning Commission who join the ASCC, either to participate or to, to comment as members of the public and say yours to which way is more appropriate. County Attorney or Senior Planner.
I think maybe commenting on, as a member of the public, I think it's too, I mean, if you have more than one Planning Commissioner there, well, I mean, it's a Brown Act meeting, right? Is my understanding that?
I can, I can imagine that it would be cleaner to have a person or two in the service and number of the public rather than as the.
Yes.
Anyway, that's, I don't, beyond that.
Would you like to volunteer?
Maybe. I should check to see whether or not that's possible. I was actually thinking that it might be really appropriate for the Chair to. But, yeah.
When is the meeting? It's, it's Monday, Monday.
Yeah, may I, may I inquire about that?
You may.
So the idea of having a Monday meeting has just come up today and I didn't, I didn't know we were going to be preparing for that. So I do need to put out a packet. It won't be overly complicated. I can't imagine not preparing a staff memo. So I'm just, and also I, I need to make sure that we'll have forum. It sounds like we have at least two. I don't know if Gina can make it. I don't know about Carter and Kenny. Carter will be there on Monday. He did? Okay. Okay, so we do have forum.
I, I will be on vacation, but I could, I don't know how much notice I have to give if I'm not going to be here. I could probably post something kind of like Linda's doing.
Yeah, what Linda's doing, it just has to be included on the agenda.
Okay.
And you just have to follow the procedures. The other thing is I, I haven't checked with consultants to see if they can come. I think it's really important. You can't go. Oh, yeah, you're off on spring break. Yeah, it's spring break for lots of people. They want to meet on Monday. And then I have to publish my next packet tomorrow.
Yeah.
Oh, I can, I can send it out on Friday. So Monday's packet can go out as late as Friday.
Does it have to be official meeting or is it your subcommittee, Rebecca?
No, it would be the whole ASCC.
Okay.
It's a regular ASCC meeting.
Okay. Sorry.
Yes. There were, I think, three at one point, three or four.
Two on here now.
So I can play on Monday, but I want a friend on the PC.
I can do Monday. I don't know what time it is.
Six, six o'clock.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, I can do that. Okay. As members of the public.
Okay, and we are confident we'll have forum for ASCC. Yeah.
Do you have any other discussion items?
None. Ron? Yeah, I also think it's kind of going in a good direction that Rebecca kind of outlined. I wanted to say on, as far as considering, potentially considering like the specific sites versus the, thinking about it as more generically applying to any site, the, the zoning codes that we're establishing. I, I mean, I think, think we kind of all would sort of like it to be generic and, you know, be able to take these codes that we're establishing and then, and use them other places. But also like, you know, given the constraints and time involved in trying to get this together quickly, I, I think it's fair for us to sort of, you know, focus on like, what is the impact going to be on the specific sites that are going to be zoned in this way? And it, you know, it just is, is the case that it is only those sites that are currently going to have that zoning. And for any other sites to get that zoning, we would have to approve it. And so, you know, it's, it's not going to be the case that we establish the zoning and some other site is going to automatically get it. And so if in the future we want to rezone another site as multifamily, we could use the same zoning codes we're establishing now, or we could modify them at that time, or we could establish a new, a new multifamily, whatever the number is, zoning code. So I guess just to me, like, if, if that kind of makes our job easier to at least, and I, you know, so we don't have to actually do anything to specify that these zoning codes are for specific sites, but it's just kind of maybe shifting to sort of think about it that way and focus that way might help us. On, on, is commenting on the landscaping, so I think your intention is that it's a minimum. It's not exactly clear if the landscaping area ratio is a minimum or a maximum, but I think it's a minimum. To me personally, I, I don't know that I would prioritize landscaping that much. I mean, I think we could also rely on sort of the environment around just the natural environment more either, either on the site or around the site rather than trying to dictate a lot of landscaping, which at least for affordable housing can also drive up the costs.
I don't, I don't think we're referring to actually built, built landscaping and, you know, specifying particular plants as much as just having green area. It's green in some way.
So does green, I mean.
Escape, yeah.
That includes the natural environment, I guess, which is often not green.
Which is often brown.
Right, because it's not watered. Okay, fair enough. So, but so maybe.
We'll have to find some appropriate word.
Yes. And then just a very small thing, well, a detailed thing, this, I asked about it in our, in our last meeting, this thing about having shared entrances may serve no more than three units. To me seems like a requirement that we should not have. And so maybe if we could just give that some attention and decide if you agree with it or not.
Meaning you want fewer or more?
Or just to get rid of that requirement?
I think we should allow more and/or just delete the sentence so that there is no requirement on it. It seems overly constraining to me. Like, for example, you could have an entrance, you could have a unit on the left, unit on the right, unit upstairs, you know, upstairs and the left and right, so that's four. In some other scenarios, it could be six. It just feels better to me to have one entrance rather than a bunch of entrances. That's it.
Linda, you got comments? Discussion items?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. I think although some of the concepts are complex, I think our job here is pretty clear. We gave this, we requested some input from the ASCC and, and I think they just hit it out of the park. I think the summary that Carter gave during his public comment there went to one of the questions that was, Anne was talking about and I shared, which is sort of what's your normal size range? He used 800 square feet as a cutoff and you could see how his creative mind would use that as a place to go up and go down around things. And that with the FAR and the CAR, I think he was very comfortable that we could hit our goals. It's, it's, it's my strong feeling, I don't want to be in the process of either micromanaging the sort of legal commitments that were made, although I think staff needs to look at what's happening at the Alpine Road Nath Horse thing where we've had public comments on a number of occasions and make sure we're clear what our commitments are and that this zoning doesn't cancel any of those commitments. But by and large, I think I support strongly the, the approach that the ASCC took. I, I persist in my belief that for the MF32, we ought to require some sort of recreation or make it a very strong bonus. Before I lived in Portola Valley and I lived in a little old neighborhood, there were always basketball hoops on every street corner and dogs in every yard. And I think if we have a more, more concentrated housing, if we don't put some sort of recreation in that area, it degrades the whole, you, you can build a good building, but people behave in certain ways and unless there's a park right there, well, you know, what are we going to do with all those kids? So I persist in feeling like that's an important part of, of what we ask people to do.
Linda, Linda, you're saying for the Ladera Church to do that?
No, no, because I think that's going to end up being the, a smaller group that, that's not the only place we have the MF32, right?
Twenty-three.
Twenty to twenty-three, and it, it is.
Right now, yeah.
Right now it is.
Eventually Ford, Ford opens.
Ford Field is what I'm thinking of.
Ford Field doesn't get zoned. We're not talking about Ford Field. That'll be a completely independent discussion on Ford Field because it's town-owned land. So, and if we give them the property, it's going to be negotiated directly.
Okay, then I misunderstood that. And no, I don't expect the church to do that. I didn't have that map right in front of me. But that raises my other question is I really think while we're doing this, I, I agree with Karen's comment, we ought to fix the open space at Frog Pond and the incorrect designation of the school, which is now listed as residential. So I, I think we ought to fix that.
Which school?
The Corder Madero School on the map, shown as RE2.
What about the other schools prior?
I don't know the exact location of the other school, so I didn't look at it.
The others are residential.
I thought the comment about insurability was a, was a really good one to think about because I'm really bothered, I guess my, my final comment, and I think Carter also addressed this, I'm really worried about the building height and the fire potential. I've done projects with mutual aid and, you know, the, the point's going to be how quickly can we stop the spread of the fire and not put out the fire, I'm afraid. And so I think the comments about what's going to happen on our roads, there was some discussion about comparable sites from the consultants and, and I, I personally feel like about the only comparable site in the state might be Malibu where there's only one, two ways out, north or south along the Pacific Coast Highway and the fires come down the hill. We're uniquely kind of caught in here with only two ways out for most of us. And I think that that's a really high concern for me and, and I don't know, I don't think it's practical. I'd like to have data. I guess I'd like to have data on what really could happen if there's no fire anywhere else, how quickly we could get a fire truck in. And, you know, that presupposes that the roads are open. So I guess that's my, my, my big concern and I thought the insurability approach to that was a good one. I guess my final comment and, and I, I think it's important as we think about what I'm going to call some of the more subjective aspects of an objective standard is affordability. Affordability in housing refers to the household using 30%, you know, of their income for their housing costs. And, and some of us have been equating affordability to the cost of construction. People who build these things have in complex and varied and many forms of financial incentives that they can get, low-cost loans and things like that. So I think it's a mistake for us to put ourselves too much in the shoes of a developer. And, and, and on the one hand, we want to have our objective criteria, but we want to have some room for them to be creative as well. And I, I thought Carter captured that in his comments earlier. So I, I, I know that's an immense task for staff, especially with so few of you and I don't know how much management support you're getting right now, but I, I hope that, I hope that what the ASCC has done will help simplify the job and, and not complicate it. And I guess I, I do feel strongly that we should put in a pretty clear presumption that what we're writing only applies to the properties that are included here. Like, I'm, I'm embarrassed to say, I thought we were including other properties as well. So it would be helpful for me to be pretty clear about that. That's all.
That's all, okay. Anne?
Good, so thank you, ASCC. I think you're on a good track for us. I definitely, oh, and I'm very sensitive to the time pressures you all are under in our whole town. And I know people don't like deadlines, but, you know, the world works with deadlines and bad things can happen, you know, if we don't make this perfect, but bad things happen if we spend too long on it. So I'm hunting for ways to help focus the work you all and then we have to do. I definitely like the idea of really focusing on these specific sites, even though it's not the general way I'd like to do things, but in the interest of time, I think your work can be clarified if you're just imagining these sites. And I really don't think we're going to add any more for eight years, so. I like the ideas of the right objective standards that are strict, but there can be a path that people can come, talk to the ASCC and maybe get more lenient allowances or rules. But again, I think to the extent you can save time now by leaving it for later to make those lenient paths, that might work. I wish there was a path to not have you spend much time on the 23 units per acre, but I, I think that, I, I kind of think we need to, but if, if that does emerge, I'd be okay with that. I'm actually okay with the three stories if you get in a box and can't get it to work out or when the consultants run their models. And that's even with the fire issues, you know, the engine trucks get there quickly and can start putting out fires before the latter truck can come from them apart. Oh, I love the idea you guys proposed of making a path for simple houses. And if the modular description or that can be pushed to later, I'm really in favor of that. You know, I don't have a strong opinion between doing the FAR floor area ratio versus the CAR, but with, the CAR would come with unit sizes that you define. So whichever way you guys go is okay by me. But I really like defining minimum and maximum units. I'm going to be so bummed if we did all this work for all these years and then what we get is a proposal for somebody to build, you know, three, 5,000 square feet luxury kind of unit somehow to, around the rules. I will just be really bummed. So I kind of like sticking up, especially the maximum size in there. For me, it's out of scope. We're under the gun to do these modifications to other zoning. I think when people say Frog Pond, they mean the road remnant, but I think all this housing's tied together and many other sites would need to get looked at. And my last thing is probably out of scope, but we're a public body, we take public comments. I hope you saw, there's just so many thoughtful people in our town, but there are sometimes people say things that I think are rude and wrong. And I'm so sorry you consultants and employees have to listen to this. It is wrong, it is incorrect. Some of the things that person said about what you'd included, they are legally demanded. I know they, when you're reading, you think, why do we have that? We've discussed it many times. Those things have to be included here. So we've had a lot of employees leave and I mean, a lot of different reasons, but dang it, it does not help that people come and say rude things about the work people are doing. So I'm bringing it up every single time somebody says that. So I'm sorry. I think you guys have been hired by our town council, which are our elected officials. They have decided that you all are doing good work. I see good work. I just want to say sorry about that and not everybody thinks that.
Okay, you're done, okay. How did that happen? Okay, sorry about that. Yep, thank you. I'm trying to, I'm going to go over my list to see what hasn't been mentioned. I did, one of the things I liked most about the ASCC review was the, the thought about, you know, you talked about incentives. I, I liked it as the more along the lines of, is there an alternate path that would allow us to have more control? I think we can only do that if we can figure out a way to not make it count towards the five-meeting rule, that it's something that is requested by an applicant, so they themselves are requesting an extra meeting. I'd hold off on actually trying to think about like exact numerical incentives at this point in time because I don't think we have to have them and I think we'll work those out later. But I, but I do like the idea of having, saying, but we're willing to give on a number of items if somebody wants to take the effort and come talk to us and be reasonable with us. I think that makes a lot of sense. That being said, that means you go tighter on the bare minimum objectives, right? Because, so for instance, you know, the height discussion is clearly one that really bothers people, right? That people clearly don't like. But it's a trade-off, right? It's height or it's setbacks, right? It's building separation or it's massing, right? There's, it's, it's, there's a trade-off to be made there. Having, so, so, so I would never try to say, don't do three stories. On the other hand, I would say if we can find a way to do it on these specific sites without three stories, I think that, or that the three-story part is the one that you'd have to come talk to the ASCC about. I think if we could make that work, that would work really well and it starts to bypass the concerns about the, the fire trucks and all of that. So I, you know, it comes down to can we make it work, which is going to be key that we start to do some of these tests and, you know, try to put it to the, check out what we've actually done. You know, and I thought there were some great suggestions on running it by some of the current people that are in the hopper and say, hmm, would this work for them? That, I think that's a great idea in terms of part of moving forward. You have to do the base first, which are, so it sort of comes after that, but I think that's a great idea in terms of how we proceed with that. I am with Anne on the, you know, Frog Pond, I think is out of scope. We don't have to, except it's really the road remnant that people are talking about. We don't have to do that. I think anything we don't have to do, or anything that would make any changes, that would sort of apply changes to the HCD and our housing element, is absolutely the wrong thing to do at this point. You know, we got into trouble before because we kept changing things. I think we just want to turn in exactly what they, the minimum they said they need. And that allows us to focus, you know, and other stuff we can potentially work on later. I think overall, you know, there was a lot of agreement about where we should go, so I'm pretty hopeful that, that you guys will be able to get us to that next step on the objective zonings here. So I think the idea is we would try to stay with the schedule that you put in place at the last meeting and, you know, hopefully we'll try to get there. The testing will be key.
John, sorry.
Yeah.
For the Chair. About scheduling.
Yes.
I think staffing consultants were under the impression that we would sort of get most of our marching orders from this meeting. And then we would have enough time to do some of the site testing, to test out a specific standard prior to the April 17th PC meeting. Because we're having the ASCC meeting being inserted, we're just not going to have that time.
Okay.
So I just want to raise that right now to suggest that we may not have, you know, fully baked, everything worked out for the April 17th PC meeting. So that's, and you guys might say, well, we're almost there, but we need one more meeting. And I just want to flag that because it's going to have the domino effect of just pushing, pushing our meeting schedule out. So I just want to put that out there.
I think you're totally right. Which I was hesitant when I said, I think we'll try to stay on the schedule, but.
Wouldn't we be able to move it forward to the council with the proviso that council ought to go and be attentive to staff's calculation and adjust accordingly? And that would keep us on schedule, keep you on schedule and.
As long as the Planning Commission, that we don't have to see that to have a good feeling about whether we want to send it on or not, right? If it, so influences are thinking about it, then we have to get the, the areas worked.
You'll want to have a comfort level to make a recommendation of approval. Even if there's a few outstanding things, you would say, you know, subject to this, this and this, Planning Commission definitely approval.
Yeah, we ought to know what it is that we're transmitting. On the other hand.
I, I.
Town, town council is a sophisticated group of people who can do their own work and draw their own judgment based upon information we give to them and what staff has to say. And if council wants to make a modification, you know, that's, that they, they assuredly will.
Thank you. Just flagging that though.
Yeah. That's everything I had. Grani, you look like you had something else and maybe Linda had something too.
Oh.
Linda, did you have?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I, I think, I feel like we've just driven the staff into the ground and I think, I think if Adrian thinks two more weeks, then I think two more weeks. I, I appreciate Nicholas's comment, but I think at this point with HCD, a couple of weeks isn't going to make that much of a difference. What more can they do to us? So I, I'd like to keep an open mind about the schedule until we see where we are in two weeks. That's all.
Grani, you had something.
Yeah. So about this idea of having the incentives or the alternate, alternate path that goes through ASCC, I guess, I thought I had asked about that in my questions and I thought the answer from attorney was more or less that we couldn't do that. My understanding is what's being discussed is that that would be something to be worked on later. Okay, I mean, there's a discussion about thinking about it, but what is really before this body in the ASCC is let's figure out the objective standards. Let's figure out a different path for other type of things we want to see in town at a later stage.
So I think the only, the only thing that probably we'll need some advice on legal on is do we need like a one line in there saying there's a, potentially for another process? We have to, we have to put that in the objective code. We just deal with it later.
Yes.
Perfect.
And then, I mean, I guess it sounds like we, I mean, there is an idea that, oh, we make the objective standards extremely restrictive and then to encourage this alternate path, but it seems like we just need to be careful about that, that the objective standards are sufficient to make the development.
Yeah, we're, that's why the test is going to be key. It's, I mean, they can't be so restrictive that you get these, you know, postage-sized units that HCD is going to look at and go, no, that doesn't work. It's got to be something that actually works, but probably on the smaller size. Anybody have any other thoughts on what we need to do or direction or staff things that we need to tell you about?
I, I'm real quick, what format do you want the information back from us? Like we did last time, we got it back by Thursday? Do we need to get it back by Tuesday or the next day, or, you know? What is the best? You need it definitely by Thursday for the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, we always strive to get the agenda packet out on the Thursday prior to the meeting, but realistically, it'll be Friday before the seventeenth. And that would give you guys a little bit more time, so.
Well, I'm just thinking in terms of working with your consultants. If you're planning to work with them before the seventeenth as it is, you might want our information sooner rather than later, but.
That part is a little unresolved for me because Monica's not available next week at all. And so I don't know what I'm going to do about that. We might just do our best and ASCC will work through their process, and I might have to take a lot of stuff back and kind of vet it. I think Ca- Catherine will be back. No, she won't be at ASC, though, it'll just be me. I think we can just do our best. I may not be able to answer certain questions without our expert here. Does that sound still appealing?
Yes, for sure.
That you want to hold the meeting?
Yeah, okay, for sure.
Okay.
I think so too. I think we, we, yeah.
Having fed up of tonight, we even just talked about the meetings for the ASC. We talked about the first meeting, would anybody be discretionary? You know, and, you know, there's also the vision of the ASC meeting with an applicant. You know, we really know how to talk about the land and the architecture. I think we should be really inspiring, you know, with someone who has a project. So I, I hope that does happen, and I hope it happens discretionary or late in the beginning, so it doesn't count against this five-meeting. So we'll see. But I have a feeling we can really pull this together.
Anything else you guys need from us? No?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I'm just sort of thinking through, I don't want to put myself in a situation where I'm not able to answer questions and move it, I don't want to hold us back, but if I don't have our, our consultant with me, I might be limited in, in certain areas, so I think we'll just do our best.
I think we just have to acknowledge that. If it happens well, then we'll have to come up with plan B.
Okay.
Awesome. Then I think I need a motion to adjourn.
Hold second.
I don't, do we have to do roll call because, because we've got online?
I'm sorry, we do have, I have no staff reports, commission reports, are we good?
Oh, sorry, I skipped everything tonight. No other reports.
Okay, okay, and we don't have minutes tonight, so.
Okay, adjourn.